They've been median licensing requirements, but they want more space for the kids. So it's a part, it's a part of the overall education program.
You're talking five years before E C C might be open up and maybe C T U needs playground equipment.
For their daycare. Yeah, from the teacher, teacher ed program.
Yeah, there you go.
Very well, the childcare program.
Did you say playground, any two of those two O S's?
We, we talked about, just talk about beautification in our bond and we're removing twenty-two grand for irrigation and plantings. Is that just, we're just, you don't think we need it?
Oh, we need it.
We need it.
It just, it didn't work to have be that far over budget. We'll, we'll pick off some of those things with other funds.
Got it.
It's, it's needed.
Yep.
There's more, there's, there's a couple of things we'll do too, but it just, we've got to get this whole package done for the funding source.
Got it.
To get them on board and approved. They've approved it so many times and they keep adding one more thing, so.
Makes sense. Thank you.
So will this be coming to us next year?
Any questions for Matt? Thank you.
Thank you. All right, thanks guys.
Appreciate it.
Thanks, gentlemen.
All right, so I, this is always a, a favorite time of year for me to be able to celebrate some of the successes. While also holding some of the really great work that teachers and administrators are engaged in across the district because we are always striving for continuous improvement. So I'll be doing a little bit of both. There's a pattern to this presentation, so those of you who've been on the board for a few years, you'll notice kind of some regular pieces of data that I share, that I will share with you this evening. But certainly stop me in the middle, there'll be opportunities to also, for questions at that, okay? So by way of reminder, we have two peer groups that we'll be looking at this evening. This one is called our like district peer group. So these are districts across the state, eleven in particular, including us, that we'll use for comparative sake when we think about the size of the district. So enrollment as well as free and reduced lunch counts. So we typically use that as a demographic kind of placeholder when we're thinking about a like district. So similar student populations, both from an enrollment perspective, as well as that demographic of free and reduced.
How do we know what a twenty-three percent is a number, how do we know who, who qualifies, who does?
Yeah, so these are likely the, the connected to our twenty-four, twenty-three, twenty-four, no, yeah, twenty-four, twenty-five school year. So from a blended enrollment perspective. And so the, the enrollment numbers that you see here for all districts, whether it's the district peer group, the, the state district peer groups, or the next site of Ottawa County, that would be based on the twenty-four, twenty-five fall and spring student counts. And then it's a blended enrollment number until we have our, our, uh, beginning of this year's fall count.
I guess my question is about the free and reduced lunch.
Kids, go fill out the forms.
Okay, so we got to fill out the form?
As many as we can.
Okay.
I sent reminders on a few, as a parent, you probably got multiple reminders. It's still important you fill it out, still important you fill it out.
Definitely communicated as well.
It's, it's over communicated, but we're in the same boat as everybody else. That makes sense. So if ours are, if ours are off because of that, everybody's getting the free food, theirs are off too. That makes sense.
But you can see some districts out here that drop precipitously. Because of the free lunches, not where they didn't have to fill the forms up.
And, and that communicated.
And we've done a good job actually of continuing to do that for families because our percentage continues to be quite similar over the, the last five years. So then as we move to Ottawa County, this is our I S D peer group. You can see student counts there as well as free and reduced lunch. So this is just the comparative groups that we'll be looking at. Pardon me.
So our type is so small.
Yes, yes.
In a technical sense, it doesn't come, but they report, they go to Ottawa I S D and now.
So enrollment trends, we've already spoke, you know, kind of chatted about that topic here this evening. We know that enrollment trends across the state can be impacted by job market, not only in the state, but on the side of the county, or excuse me, this side of the state, in our county in particular, job market, housing market, those types of things. When you look at the like districts from a state perspective, you'll see that, gosh, over the last five years, there tends to be about five districts that are on an upward trend and about six districts that are on a little bit of a downward trend. But again, you'll see that that fluctuates over the last five years. So although it's helpful to sometimes look at one year's data, the benefit really is the overall trend when we're looking at those enrollment numbers.
And I just want to say, we could spend all night talking about enrollment with who has a profile in their district, who doesn't? Who's had a major impact by the auto industry? Who has affordable housing, who doesn't have affordable housing? There, there's so many layers to this, I just, I don't want to read too much into it, but these are definitely comparable districts.
Again, here's Ottawa area I S D comparison group. Again, it's really around, you know, five districts kind of on a upward trend and about six districts across the county on a downward trend. And then again, by way of reminder, these are blended numbers from twenty-four, twenty-five. So we use them because it's important for us to consider, but they are not the updated count numbers that will occur on October first.
I do have one, one question, just Jenison, do they, on this count, does it include J I A?
Yes, yes.
Are they the only one?
West Ottawa's.
West Ottawa's as.
And, and Hamilton as well.
So they count all of those?
They count everybody.
Just because you're talking about counts and I know as we're talking about funds, remind me, our projection for purposes of any fund question can only go five years out.
That's correct. We do not have calculations for, do you recall, I, I know Ken and you were here in two thousand and nineteen, Barb had just gotten on the board, I believe, that we used Stanford and Associates for, and Frank Gudavich doing the projections. There's been some questions about if those numbers are the best numbers for us to use. We've heard other districts using different firms. We're not to that point yet by doing projections based on bond work, but we will have to get, we will have to have those discussions prior to go to treasury with what it looks like from an enrollment standpoint. They will not let us put a building up that we can't open.
And that's based on a five, about a five-year projection.
I believe that's, that's still, that's still the same here.
What do you, okay, when you say, we won't let's put up a building that we can't open.
We have to be able to show that the enrollment, we could project at eighty percent capacity when we open a building. However, eighty percent capacity doesn't talk about the class sizes. So I'll look at our high school, for example. Eighty percent means I would be putting about twenty-two kids in a classroom. We don't put twenty-two kids in a classroom. We might add elementary early out, but those are even twenty-four to twenty-six. High school is traditionally twenty-eight to thirty, so, but we have to show an eighty percent capacity in order to open a, to build a building.
So getting into student performance, this graph really showcases our district's proficiency over time, beginning in two thousand and seventeen. You can see that there's a significant dip between two thousand and nineteen and two thousand and twenty-one for all comparables, as well as then a steady kind of incline, if you will. You'll also notice that Hudsonville is in red, that's outperforming across the state like districts as well as Ottawa area I S D. And then you see the Michigan data represented on there. This is M staff data, so this is all assessments, M staff data, third through eighth, all content areas, P S A T and S A T. So this is just starting real broad level and then we'll start to little bit down with, with specific content areas.
And we're looking at averages, I assume?
Averages, all content, all classes, yeah, everything together. This is M staff for all, so this graph showcases our district's proficiency over time on M staff specifically. Again, that's E L A in math for third through seventh grade, science fifth, eighth and eleventh grade, and then social studies fifth and eighth grade. One noticing that we had as we were processing some specific trend data for the specific content areas with our principal team, was that our social studies scores had really increased across the district for both fifth and eighth grade. That was kind of a celebration that we had. That's directly connected though to, I think, because we see some improvements in social studies when we look at some trend data across Ottawa County as well as state data as well. But in two thousand, twenty, twenty-one, there were new standards. And so then in this new test was the first administration of the M staff connected to social studies in two thousand and twenty-five. And our students did exceptionally well in fifth, eighth and eleventh grade, twenty to twenty-five percentage points better. And that is also a trajectory higher than others. So I think we've adjusted well to those, that's what it says to me, that we've adjusted well to those new standards from an instruction and assessment perspective and our students are performing quite well. Again, what you're seeing here is an average, that was a highlight that was pulled out from our principal conversation. Across the state, one of the areas that is, has been a concern that was articulated in some memos from M D E is just third and fourth grade E L A scores in general are concerning across the state. That is not an indicator of concern here in Hudsonville from an overall grade level perspective. Those again are some data points that we talked about with our principals in our recent meeting as well. We just don't have those similar concerns and of course, we will always want to continue to improve our outcomes for our third and fourth grade students. This is P S A T, so by way of reminder, our pre-S A T for eighth grade students, that first changed in two thousand and nineteen. It moved from taking M staff in the areas of E L A and math to requiring the P S A T for our eighth grade students. And we'll see that that data is on a downward trend, both in Hudsonville as well as state comparisons and a little bit of a downward trend, certainly from twenty-four to twenty-five at the Ottawa area I S D level. I think one of the things that our committees, committee structures, so we have a pre-K twelve E L A committee and math committee, that is really doing some deep dives into the math data, drilling down to standards, not only, we can't access a lot of the same reports that we used to from a state assessment perspective, but we certainly have our benchmark assessments that students participate in, it's our star assessment that can drill to standards. And so those committees have been doing a lot of very intentional work around what are the standards that students are not performing well on as they go throughout the year on these, these benchmark assessments, if you will. And then drilling down even further to say, where are those standards covered, taught? How are our students performing on them within our assessments in our classrooms? And that has uncovered some very valuable conversation among our teachers and administrators who sit on that committee to really do some intentional work at the sixth, eighth level with what's considered guaranteed and viable curriculum. So as teachers in our committee, we're starting to look at those standards. And let's say the three of you teach sixth grade at one building and the three of us teach sixth grade at one building. When we started to look at the data and say, okay, so what is, what does the standard, what is the standard? What resources are you using to teach it? How are we assessing it? This is all part of our professional learning community's work. And then all of a sudden, we're discovering that for some reason, somewhere along the way, we've started to unintentionally maybe stray from each other. What's happening in your building versus what's happening in our building? The teachers are now ingrained or deep in that work of saying, how do we realign so that all sixth grade students have same content, knowledge and skill? No matter who their sixth grade teacher is in these content areas. It also builds our capacity within a guaranteed and viable curriculum so that we can be a high functioning team to say, my students did very poorly, your students did very well, what are you doing that is different? Maybe nothing, maybe some things that I can learn from a collaborative perspective about changing instruction to impact student learning. So the, the teachers are, it, it is a heavy lift. They're embracing that work and that will continue. That is, that is work that I think is very relevant and necessary to the current moment. That really our data allows us to have some reasons why we're doing the work also, right? We don't want to just do laborious work for the sake of laborious work, but we want to ensure that it's impacting not only our teachers as professionals, but also absolutely the outcomes for our kids. So this is some of the action that is happening around some of the data when we take a look at, why are these downward trends here? But we're looking deeper at some of those components within those committees and that's really been powerful work.
Do we have, do we know, know how much of this is based on, I, I, they measure, they're measuring reading and writing and math?
Correct.
Do we know how much of this is influenced by math as opposed to reading and writing?
All of that data can be drilled further down into.
Did you know?
Not off the top of my head.
Okay.
If we have that data, that's the work that our principals are doing, our committees are doing. Principals are also taking the data to their specific buildings and peeling back the layers of, here's where we came in with math, here's where we came in with E L A.
We have two buildings.
Yep.
And also, what grade levels is the new math that we're teaching in?
That's kindergarten through fifth grade.
Okay, so it'll be another three years, but hopefully we'll start to see something on math or influence.
Yeah, we, we actually, when we, when we, oops.
That'll come back.
Um, we, when we are, when we look specifically, so in our recent conversation with our principals, when we're looking at specific buildings and specific grade levels, it's been fascinating to look at our math data because we are finding on our, not only M staff scores, but in the area of math, but also in our star benchmark scores, in the grade levels where students have access to the learning because of a pilot teacher. And then in their second year with a new teacher teaching it, we are seeing some, some gains in those areas and that's really exciting and to be celebrated, so.
Can I ask you a quick question?
Sure.
If you can go back to the, uh, yes, M staff. So we just, um, we just got our results in the mail like last Thursday, I think, for our kiddos. Um, and so that breaks it down by not proficient, partially proficient, proficient and advanced. Do you know, if you don't, it's totally fine, I don't necessarily expect you to, but the percent proficient, is that for the proficient and the advanced? So it's not partially proficient?
Correct.
Okay, that, because I was looking at this and I'm thinking sixty-five kind of, I mean, work, you're great, but.
This is advanced proficient and proficient, it does not include not proficient or partially proficient.
Got it, okay, thank you.
Yeah, our, our goal is proficient or advanced.
Got it, got it.
Yep. So that's our P S A T for eighth grade. As we look at S A T, that's administered to our eleventh grade students. And you can see that again, it's broken down into reading and writing as well as math. A leveling off again, kind of the last few years, both for Hudsonville as well as Ottawa I S D. Compare, compare, comparable districts statewide decrease and a little bit of a pick back up. So I think it's interesting and I think we're doing the right work here when we're thinking about rigor and standards and our P L C work of aligning and ensuring common assessments so that we can respond to student learning when we see it. Our teachers are doing amazing work and I think that that will just continue through some of our committee structures and teacher voice in some of those decisions. Hudsonville High School this year is in the top ten, number ten in Grand Rapids for best high school with U S News rankings. Some of the indicators as we look at how they determine the top schools across the state and the nation, college readiness. So it's really the percent who take and succeed on A P exams, and I'll show you that data in a moment. It's state assessment proficiencies, and you can see the previous scores, obviously we are outperforming across the state as well as the county and Michigan as an entirety. And then also graduation rate, curriculum breadth, so not only A P courses, but when we think about college level coursework that we've added in the last few years, things like the research course, advanced narrative comp. Some of those classes provide those opportunities and that higher level of rigor, even outside of the A P world, and I think that's really important. A lot of times, yes, we want to continue to increase A P courses and we want the other content relevant and, and that higher level of rigor and expectations for our students as well. So that's to be celebrated.
Quick, quick comment on this, I noticed that this was highlighted on the video board on Friday at Homecoming. That was awesome.
Yeah, you know, some schools were higher than us, but they weren't the okay red.
We'll take it.
So.
I love your video board. Like your commercials up there all the time.
I'm sure you love it.
Well, no, it's nice to, it's nice to go and celebrate that and surround your community with it and about like that, awesome.
So A P data in particular, we currently have nineteen A P courses. We will be presenting another one in October for consideration for the twenty-five, twenty-sixth school year. If district, or if department chairs approve it to move forward, so I follow that whole process. But we'll be presenting that to all of you as we look to expand that. Our, our data looks amazing in this area as well. So not only the number of opportunities for students to engage increases the number of exams. Just because you take an A P course, you don't have to choose to take the exam. We have more students choosing to take those exams. We also have more students who are scoring three plus score, which is always a desired score. And if the overall percentage is ninety-three point six percent of our students are getting that score, that allows them for potential credit as well as just recognition for a job well done and high level of learning, right? It's their rigorous courses and our students continue to perform very well.
Amy, why wouldn't students want to affect the A P exam?
So, say it again, Mark.
Potentially cost, if there's low income.
Could be cost, we would cover the cost a little, but that, that is some of it. There's also some kids that if you don't get a five, they don't want to get the score that goes to the school that they could depend on where they're calling the school.
Additionally, some colleges accept a grade of A or B in the course as evidence and will offer credit.
So why take the exam?
So I have three or four kids not take the A P line exam because their grade was good enough. They didn't need to take the exam in order to get the credit.
You recommend to someone that don't take the exam?
I want them all to take the class.
Okay.
But Davenport accepts a grade in the course as opposed to the A P.
But if someone got an A or B, my community employee and the exam, would that hurt?
It could, but probably not at Davenport.
Okay.
Why stress about taking it?
Right, yeah, probably it's because of the stress.
So I, I will say that Amy and her department's a phenomenal job with not only promoting, but supporting the staff at one A P. I, I don't know if Dawn and Ken remember, but I know when, when I interviewed for the position to come here, this was a talking point about trying to increase the rigor in the number of students. And I, I think that a lot has happened in the last several years based on the, a lot of it comes from the high school staff, don't get me wrong, but Amy does a phenomenal job with that.
I also just want to add this, not just about A P courses, that is one component, but I think our, our teachers continue to do a couple of things. One is we are working to consider those other types of college preparatory classes, like I just mentioned, as well as all of our P L C work, they are looking at standards, they are processing in their teams, what does this standard mean to you? How is it showing up on an assessment? Is the rigor of the, the questions that we're asking students on our assessments matching the rigor of what we want our standards? What the standard says, we want our students in biology to do and, and know. And so it's just, it's kudos to our teachers and our administrators. I think, you know, when I think process on some of our next steps, I alluded to the fact of both the pre-K twelve, E L A and math committee, they are, are highly engaged in the work around what our students are learning and what they're not and how do we respond? I would also say that on Friday, our six, twelve teachers will be engaged in some professional learning where they are choosing sessions around the P L C work. So if, if we're a biology collaborative team, we will choose, gosh, our next step of work is to really look at our common assessment, ensure that the rigor is there, and so we're going to sign up for a rigor session that principals and our instructional coaches are meeting. And so we've developed that opportunity for, to do some learning around how might we investigate rigor on these particular questions that are connected to the standards? How, and then work to, then we would have also time on that professional learning afternoon to be able to do that work and make those modifications. And so we alluded to it also at the board meeting a couple of weeks ago around how we are continuing to use A I to create that high level of efficiency. And so I, I just can't say enough about how our administrators are engaged with this instructional leadership and how our department chairs and our teacher leaders are just embracing it and really excited to, this is a, a new form of professional learning pattern that will happen throughout the entire year. We'll, we'll get feedback and we'll modify and adjust if, if needed, so. Yeah, I think, I think so, those are some of the big ideas. We reviewed some deeper data with principals at an admin, administrative team meeting a couple of weeks ago. They are now starting then to present similar data at their school guiding coalition meetings. We'll have our first district improvement meeting coming up in October where we'll also be considering data and what areas of improvement we need to consider. So when we talk about data, it's not just about this evening and now we go like this, it's, it's continuing that conversation. Also within our multi-tiered systems of support, we have assessments not only from collaborative teams throughout the year where they're making adjustments, but we also have our benchmark assessments that will happen, we'll be looking at that data. We don't just wait for the autopsy, we have multiple checks throughout the school year to say, how are our students progressing? Are there things that we can modify and adjust, not only in tomorrow's instruction, but also as we think about the next trimester or the next semester and how we modify and adjust?
Maybe we could say we don't wait for the physical exam rather than the autopsy. But anyway, I had a, and, and very, very good explanation of what's going on.
The student summary data is extremely impressive. Every calendar category that is listed. When you look at just the number of exams, that month from six twenty-eight to ten sixty-four, the percentage of students with a three plus, the percentage eighty-one point four ninety-nine, three point six four. I mean, that, that summary data is incredible.
Extremely validating for the teachers.
I was going to say, there's some pretty great teachers behind those.
Yeah, they're doing the right work. Every teacher in, in our district works hard and we, we continue to say, let's ensure we're doing the right work, right? None of you can work harder, none of you can work more hours, so how do we, how do we have these meaningful conversations about doing the right work? Not just the same work?
So, so maybe along those lines, like when I look at the state data and oftentimes like almost everyone, there's kind of like this trend. We all kind of ebb and flow up and down together. We're just better than everybody else, that's a credit to the staff, which is incredible. But is there a scenario where we could like hack the system and do things a different way where everybody else is kind of going up and down? But like since we're really good at what we do here in this district, we could just like take the scores even higher, like in sports, like.
Yeah.
Every once in a while, some coaching staff figures something out and they're.
I think so. One hundred percent.
Is that possible?
Absolutely is possible, and I think that that's the work that our teachers are engaging in now. I, I just do, I think it's the right work, we're asking the right questions about rigor and standards and expectations. And, and I do, I think that it's absolutely possible. I also think that when we consider professional learning, and I, using the math example at the K five level, it's, it's not about a curriculum, it's about the knowledge and skill of teachers. And so how we're engaging teachers with increasing their knowledge and skill as collaborative teams, with professional learning. That, that's where impact happens, job embedded professional development with learning walks and some of the things that we're doing intentionally with instructional coaches. I do think so, I think, I think our district's in a really good place.
Yeah, I'm not disappointed at all, this is really, this is awesome, it's just like, man, okay, we're just better. They do the same thing everybody's doing, we're just better at it, but is there something different just completely outside of the box?
Well, potentially, I mean, I think we are doing the right work more intentionally even this year than in years past. I would also say that there are some grade levels that need more attention than others that, that we are also looking at. And so, but we are, we have the right spaces and structures in place to have that conversation and dialogue and we'll figure out.
Awesome, that's great, yeah.
I think too, like the, the amount of communication and coordination with teachers and parents right now is like, it's incredible.
Good.
Right, and, and my parents had no idea what I was doing in school, you know what I mean? Like they knew I was, this, got good grades and I was doing fine, but like to get emails from, from teachers and from building principals almost daily about here's the things we're working on.
They didn't have email.
Right, exactly, right.
Your kids are better than you.
That's one hundred percent true, but I think, I think, I mean, teachers deserve a lot of credit. And I mean, teachers are the reason I'm motivated to be on this board, right? Like I am, why I am because of the great educators in this district. But like, we also have a lot of really good communities and families that are really supportive of high quality education. And that I think is where the back will do. So, and I think the, the coordination and the, the things that I get even earlier this week about here's what we're doing in class, here's what you can support your student at home. Here's what you can reinforce at home to drive home this message, right? It's, it's super, super, super helpful as a parent, so very cool.
And yet I think to your point about the fact that we all seem to be going on the same trends. I do think we also cannot discount what happens in our state and our country, in our world that affects our students in every district. I mean, because clearly you can see the dip in culture. And so sometimes I think when we see those trends nearing, I don't think we can discount the external forces that we have no control over. And so as much as we'd like to like, you know, break through these trends, there's only so much you guys can do. Without, you know, not being impacted by what's happening around us.
We have to get out of the way for a hundred percent of our students to be, to be set top category, but we strive for it.
Yeah, exactly.
And I'm not saying you're not, don't take it as a negative, obviously, we've got a team in place. If anybody was gonna like break the trend, like.
I think the other thing that sometimes can contribute to those similar trends for everybody is that items, item types on tests, right? They're all taking the same test and we don't always know what those item types are. We don't know, we, we know the standards, we know, right? And so that's, that's the information we have to process, but I do wonder about complexity of test item questions and those types of things that also impact some trends like that as well.
Amy, do we know how many of our kids last year went to college percentage wise and how that, how that corresponds with earlier years?
I believe the, the high school counseling staff tracks some of that data. I know we've talked about exit surveys before.
The struggle is always how many go to college and how many finish the third year of college. I think it's updated on the website, I can quick look.
The reason that I'm asking is because I, I just read something that is eleven million less male students that started college in twenty twenty-four than did in twenty eleven. They're going to the trade schools and stuff like that. Do we find, and the reason I'm asking this is do we find that kids who are gonna go into the trades and there's more and more of them are less apt to take the A P courses? Or, I mean, there's some real sharp kids that are going into trades and owning their own businesses and stuff.
Absolutely. I, I mean, I think that that just speaks to the rigor of the content that I was talking about. It's not just about A P courses and it speaks to some of the work we've been doing six, twelve in particular, actually pre K twelve. But really ensuring that it's not just about info in, info out. It's really about problem solving, having student discourse, ensuring that those instructional practices within our classroom are teaching kids how to be a professional, no matter what that means, right? Whether you're going to college or whether you're going to be an electrician, you still are a part of a team and you need to communicate, you need to read manuals and, and close read and yeah, so.
Okay.
I don't have every year's data, but last year fifty-six percent were planning on going to a four-year institution, fifteen percent to a two-year institution. Six percent technical or trade program, two percent military, twenty, twenty-one percent directly in Florida.
Is that much different than like two years?
I don't, I, I don't have, I have last year's, so I can go back a little bit.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
Thank you very much, Amy.
Go further, go further, Amy, we'll go to the next.
No, see, can I shift gears?
Yes, I can.
We lost a lion's name in the back.
What? A lion's name. I can't wait.
No, lion's name, you lost a lion. We're not down there, you can, I'll be out here.
So I, this evening I'm bringing to you, not only wanting to share an overview of a process that I put together for selecting a sex ed advisory board co-chair, but also a recommendation. So this was shared as a process, so there hasn't been a process other than, hey, would you like to be the sex, or let me know if you might be interested in the sex ed advisory board co-chair as a parent? You can see at the top of this document, there are items that I pulled both from our bylaws, which are board approved, as well as, yeah, through all three of them, which are actually right from our, our bylaws, actually. I thought that there was one from board policy on there, but that require a co-chair person, what their role and responsibility is. I shared this with our sex advisory board on September ninth for any additional feedback on timeline, process, et cetera. The rubric I also have attached really connects to the role of the chairperson. So when we think about those categories of the type of person who would be good at serving in this role, collaborative leadership, facilitation skills, commitment to improvement work, credibility and trust and really that role mindset. Those connect to those overarching items from the bylaws. And then really what I did was they, they thought, they didn't have any additional tweaks or feedback, they said this sounds like a great process. And then I shared a Google form with them that had questions specifically to share their experiences around collaborative leadership, facilitation skills, et cetera. And then I took the rubric, there were two individuals who completed the Google form who were both highly qualified. I even went back to the, to the bylaws and thought, can we have two co-chairs? Could I have two co-chairs with me? No, that's not what it says. So I did, based on the, the rubric, one individual just slightly outperformed the, either evidence that they shared, facilitation skills and commitment to improvement. So I'm recommending for official approval in October, but for discussion this evening, Emily Ruckting. She is a mom of a freshman at our high school as well as three graduating seniors last year and has extensive experience in all of these areas. So that would be my recommendation. Any questions about the process or the recommendation?
Do we, do we check any, do you go to references and stuff?
No, they're, they're already board approved as a member of the sex ed advisory board. And then really the process was just to say, what experiences do you have that connect with the role of a co-chair? And then measure it against a rubric as best as possible instead of just like, hey, you wanna do it? Just trying to create a little bit more process to it so that everybody has equal opportunity to put their name in the hat if they're interested.
How long do they usually last?
So the, the individual.
Serving.
So the goal will be that she, she is starting the beginning of her three-year term. Again, that's also established in the bylaws, so the goal would be that she would stay in that co-chair role for the three years of her term.
Nice job. Barb, do you remember, I mean, you served on this years ago, and do you remember how the chair, co-chair was in a, any of?
It's like whoever volunteered, no one wanted to volunteer.
So if you missed a meeting, you were not with the board.
Yeah, I was on it prior to you.
Okay. You're welcome.
Well, there you go.
Yeah, there you go.
It's great.
Yeah, it is great that we have two people.
But I, I just wanna commend you, and this is a, this is not necessarily a committee that's had the structure that it really deserves. And we went through some, a, a lot of heavy lifting in our first year of doing this. Fortunately, it was prior to some of the dynamics of COVID, but it's, it's really, it's not, I mean, the meetings are, it's really well drawn, so much done. That's it, I am, it is now eight fifteen. We have two options, Mr. President, we can go in, I would make a request to go into closed session. If based on the length of this meeting, we'd rather wait until after the next board meeting to go into closed session, we can do that also. It's a brief five to ten minute conversation. But I'm, based on how long we've been here, if you'd rather have closed session after the next board meeting, that won't be as long, we can do that also.
It's up to me, what do you think? I mean, I know there's game tonight, but.
Andrew checking the score.
Oh, I'm just, it's not sitting on my, right?
I'm a Vikings fan, so I'm fine sticking around long as I can.
Is there anyone who, who wants, who really wants to leave right now or just getting the soul away?
I think it's more important to just get it over with.
Ten minutes.
How long is the attending?
Ten, ten minutes.
Oh, I'm probably staying.
I didn't have dinner.
Especially, I'm gonna be absent here, we do a vote in session and the two attendees are not here, then we don't have to lose the room because of the state time.
Okay.
I'm kicking you out. I, I can go. I, I won't wait until you guys are out.
Okay.
Okay. Okay, well then, I'm going to make.
Thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
Appreciate you.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you very much.
Seriously.
Have a good night, everyone, go Lions.
Yeah, enjoy, hey.
Have a good night.
I want my Lions socks.
No.
Thanks, guys.
Then I, I make a motion that we go into closed session. Okay, guard and then second Andrew. Okay, now Andrew can, oh no. It was you and Dawn before, okay. Andrew, no, you can't. And then, uh, let's see, we have a, we have a second, any discussion? Okay, and then we're gonna take a roll call for that, right? Okay, next?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, you can end this, okay.